City of Brainerd, Minnesota, November 15th, meeting at 7:30, and we will call the meeting to order. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
High chair today, I feel like I'm... Next up is the approval of the agenda. I think we got a couple of things we have to officially add. One is, I think SP&amp;W's got something that you're adding, right? A bus purchase?
We did.
Okay, good. Next up, I think we're going to add a new business, which is a charter amendment. That'll be, uh, SP&amp;W then adds the bus number six to the SP&amp;W Safety and Public Works Agenda. And the, uh, charter, um, item, additional charter item, because there's already one on there, is the first reading of proposed ordinance 1523. Um, that would be under New Business, letter B. And the other thing is, staff has notified me that in the closed sessions, we want to flip-flop items 14 and 15. So we want to move the closed session for union negotiation after the closed session to consider offers for the purchase of property at the NP Center. So with those three staff recommended corrections, is there a motion to accept the corrected agenda?
Move to accept the corrected agenda.
Second. Perfect. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Number five is the consent calendar. These items, all listed, are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time. The council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. We are underway. That is adopted. Item six is a presentation by the Northland Arboretum, annual presentation. Who's ever giving the presentation, please come on up. You've got a spot there. We do need to know your name and address, because there's people watching online, I hope.
Yes, thank you for having me. My name is Candace Zimmerman. I am the executive director of the Northland Arboretum. And I want to start off by thanking, um, thanking you all for, for inviting me or having me tonight, um, as well as your support, um, through the funds that the Northland Arboretum receives. So, um, I hope that throughout this presentation, you will see the impact that the Northland Arboretum has on the Brainerd area and the city of Brainerd, um, even though we have, you know, seen some struggles and barriers with COVID. So, um, let's get on with it. Next slide. Um, our mission and vision has been updated this past year, and we are, um, our mission is to be a valued community asset, providing outdoor recreation and educational activities for all while protecting the natural environment. And our vision ultimately is to be a place where the community respects and connects with nature. Recently, we approved a new, um, some new officers to our board, um, so we voted on this at the end of October. Our, um, board is now, uh, has Brian Pike as our president, Dan Lee is our vice president, Judy Morgan, our secretary, and Jake Spandell, our treasurer. And this year, we were also able to elevate our board by bringing on Lori Sharon Brock with Westshore Marketing, and she's helped us a lot with our marketing potential and getting a broader reach in the community. So throughout our strategic planning process, we, um, identified key areas of improvement, but our pillars still stay the same. We still focus on education, recreation, and conservation, and they continue to be at the core of what we do. And while we're building this plan, we asked, um, a lot of us were asked to build an elevator speech, and I'm sure all of you have tried to build an elevator speech, um, in your, in your professional careers, and I asked myself, well, how do you answer that question when the Northland Arboretum has been such a staple in the community for 50 years and continues to do so much? Um, it's, it's not only Brainerd's history, it's connecting a child's curiosity to something tangible, something they can see and touch and feel and experience. It's igniting passion for, um, for nature in a young person's mind, and it's a gardener's home turf. It's also a jogger's escape if they need to just get away for a while, and all of these things bring value and meaning to our nonprofit. Next slide. I wanted to give you all an update on our financials. So our fiscal year starts October 1 and goes through September 30, and we wrapped up our fi- fiscal year, um, with the following, um, expenses. So, as you can see, the majority of our expenses this year went to, um, salary and taxes. However, a lot of that was supported through our PPP funds, um, as well as a small grant through Sourcewell. Many of our expenses also went towards maintenance and just maintaining our grounds to be a beautiful first impression, not only for our members and our, um, the citizens of Brainerd, but also to our visitors. And then that's followed up with program support, um, which goes towards our educational opportunities. And then the one, I'm, I'm sorry, but the one section that is not labeled, um, is our Next, we look at our total revenue, and as you guys can see, um, the city of Brainerd provides about a quarter of our revenue, at least in the fiscal year 2021. Um, and then we also got, um, a significant amount of grant funds, uh, coming in at 17.4%, followed up by our events and our member and gate fees, which we saw even an increase in, um, throughout the, the COVID timeframe, and we're continuing to see an uptake in both membership and gate fees, which is a real, um, uh, positive improvement for us. I also wanted to point out that, uh, we had a significant increase in our haunted trail revenue and our grant funds. So our grant funds, um, here's a little synopsis, so we got support from the Brainerd Rotary Club, as well as, um, other civic organizations, including Brainerd Noon Surtoma. Um, Operation Roundup supported a bit in Sourcewell, as well as a significant grant from the state of Minnesota that will help us, um, control our invasive species, and that grant is, um, will continue into this new fiscal year. Just a, um, quick update on what we did receive for COVID relief. We did get round one and round two forgiven. Um, luckily, we were able to put most of that into our payroll, so I could continue to keep my staff engaged in what we do and, um, uh, kept at their current hours. So that was a, a relief to us. We also received some county funds and, um, a, um, significant grant from the Brainerd Lakes Area Community Foundation. Some 2021 highlights that I want to share with you. One of them was being our successful Arbor Day event, and this was a free event that we provided to the community. Um, over a thousand people attended this free event, and it was mostly made up with, um, booths that were around our grounds, so people could, um, immerse themselves in nature-based activities. We had a lot of young families show up. It was an amazing experience for everyone, and our sponsors were able to give away refreshments that day, as well as some giveaways, and then everyone got to experience the arb in just a new way. So being able to be outside, we got a lot of great feedback from this event, and we will continue to hold it as a free event on Arbor Day. Our haunted trail, again, is our major fundraiser of the year. We had a successful year in 2020, and 2021 came in, um, even better. We had a better attendance and better revenue from, um, from this fundraiser. We continue to see amazing community support, not only from our volunteers, um, but from our local businesses and, um, sponsors as well. Of course, education is one of our core pillars, so I want to spend some time talking about what we have done under our education bucket. Some of these pictures, um, show, um, some schools that were able to attend, uh, the Northland Arboretum during their spring field trips. I was able to do a couple of classes over at, um, the city park with, um, with some kids and really immersing them in the experience. And then we were bringing, um, young families into the visitor center as well. We had a, a little, um, diorama set up with monarch butterflies this year, which kids loved to see, um, and get, um, get updates on that on social media and things. And then we also developed a kids' corner, which has, um, a new program called Nature Knapsacks, which gets kids outdoors. And then there's also a kids' nature-based library in that kids' corner as well, and we've seen an uptick in utilization of those things as the, um, as the year progresses. I also wanted to point out, if we could go back to the education slide, I'm so sorry, that we do, um, provide free nature classes to the elementary schools in the area, and we're going to continue to do this because we have a new Green Corps member, and he just started his term with us in September and will be with us through August of 2022, and his main focus is getting more youth involved in the outdoors. So we, um, started and kicked this off by offering free nature classes to Harrison Elementary School last year, and he is continuing by reaching out to the rest of the elementary schools and getting a more nature-based curriculum, um, whether it's provided by us or our Green Corps member, um, into those schools, and we're hoping to provide more field trips in the spring as well. So ultimately, what we want to do is connect youth, reach young families, and really, um, expand our educational programming. Next slide. Here we have, um, just a little bit, um, just a little bit of a view of what our partnerships look like at the arb. Not only do we have amazing experiences with our Master Naturalists and Master Gardener Program, um, but also, uh, the new Wonder Trek Children's Museum. Happy Dancy Turtle helped us, helped us with some programming this year, and, um, of course, Surtoma is, um, a great partner to the arb as well. And not included on this slide, I also wanted to point out, we have a great relationship with the Minnesota SEP Program, as well as Productive Alternatives, which allows us to be a host site for young people that are trying to get work experience. And this has been, um, a rewarding experience for us, and we believe that it helps the youth, um, not only get connected to the outdoors, but just get that little boost in their resume when they're ready to look for jobs in the future. Next slide. Volunteerism is a huge, um, core element of the Northland Arboretum. Overall, volunteers donated 2,407 hours this past year. So they're not just cleaning up gardens and going on their way, they're talking with visitors, sharing their own knowledge, really expanding on that educational component for us. And they're staying social as well. So many of them are, um, retired, and they say that this, that the arboretum is their place to go. It's their home base, and we, we enjoy being able to provide that to them. So the master gardeners, um, an example of giving back. The master gardeners use the Northland Arboretum Giving Gardens to give back, um, I believe it's 2,281 pounds of food this past year. So that food is going right back into our community and serving people that need it Here are just some highlights on our grounds improvements and what we've been working on, um, on the conservation side of things. We've been doing some landscaping, um, work and really kind of tweaking our, um, our structures, such as the arbor up there. We've been improving some trail lighting, too, to increase the utilization during the colder weather months, just to make it safer out there on the trails for people that want to use, utilize it during the dark hours. And then we also made some improvements to our prairie gazebo, which makes it an excellent opportunity for outdoor education. And as far as getting out into the community, we like to go out and play. We do have a limited staff and limited capacity, but when we're strategic, we're really able to have some fun out here. And we were able to, um, be involved in things like the Brainerd Parade and the Pumpkin Festival we were just a part of, and, um, other festivals and events in the area. And we're proud to be a part of it and proud and want to be an integral part of the city of Brainerd's growth. Next slide. So looking ahead, next slide. We're looking at our three core pillars and wanting to do some, um, some major improvements. Under the recreation bucket, we want to increase the trail usage in the cold, specifically in the cold weather months, when people tend to want to get hunkered down, we want to get them outside. We want to create an event that revolves around physical activity, and we're going to make improvements to our fitness trail and improve some marketing strategies there. And one thing that we would love the city of Brainerd's support on is becoming a designated, uh, becoming designated under the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission, and what this will do is allow us to have access to some of the funds in order to improve our key infrastructure at the arboretum. And, um, I'd be looking forward to, um, some partnership opportunities in the future there. Under conservation, we're going to restore some of our natural habitats that have, um, gotten pushed to the back burner, such as our prairie. Um, this is a picture of what I want our prairie to look like at the Northland Arboretum, um, and the specific site for it would be around our compost pile area. We want to control some invasive species, and we're already getting a kickstart on that from our state grant, so we're excited to see the results with that. And then we're going to partner with local and state agencies on ways to improve the water quality of Whiskey Creek, which flows right through the arboretum into the Mississippi. And then under education, we're going to improve opportunities for spontaneous outdoor education. So what that means is when people are out there on the trails and they say, see an interesting flower, a tree, a bush, and they say, wow, what is that? We want to be able to provide that educational opportunity, right then and there, with interpretive signage and updated technology. So we're going to utilize, um, virtual maps to make these things easier, and we're going to create a broader reach for educational opportunities as well. So under our goals, the three things we're going to be working on are marketing, sustainability, and building capacity within the arb's, um, operational system. And what this means is, I want to be able to increase our volunteer base, get more people involved at the arb, and utilizing the arb, um, to increase their own, um, physical and mental health. Next slide. And I would like to, um, wrap up tonight with a quote by Frank Lloyd Wright. "We want to study nature, we want to love nature, and stay close to nature. It will never fail you." Next slide. So in conclusion, I'd like you to take away the following. The arb is a community staple for recreation and promotes physical, emotional, and mental health. We exist as the central park of the Brainerd Lakes area and considered to be a home base for many orgas- organizations that don't have one. So examples include, uh, master gardeners and master naturalists, Focal Point, and even the, um, cross-country running and cross-country ski, um, teams of the, uh, school district. Collaboration is also at the heart of everything that we do. Um, as you can see from our partnership list, we love to get people involved, and, um, that just means that our funds are spent in the most efficient and impactful way possible. And we assist and continue to improve the overall health of the community. Next slide. So thank you all. I am, I welcome any questions or comments that you might have, and I look forward to meeting you all more in person and getting to know you. Thank you.
Hold on, we may have some questions.
Yeah.
We'll look this way. Any questions for Candace? Any questions? I, I have one.
Yes.
On the, on the revenue wheel.
Yes.
By. You mentioned the city of Brainerd. Do you get any other government revenue, like from Corin County or the city of Baxter?
We do get...
I didn't see any of that.
Right. So, um, the city of Brainerd, um, does have the, a significant, um, impact on our revenue. We do get a very small percentage, um, from the, uh, city of Baxter, which would be in, in other category, which I believe is a very small snippet on the top.
Who, that dark blue one?
Yeah.
Okay, does the county give you any, or?
We did receive, um, county funds for COVID relief, but as of right now, it's not continuous funding.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions, Candace? Chief, no? Thank you.
Yes, and one more, one more comment I would like to make on the city of Brainerd's funds is that the utilization, when we break down the utilization of the citizens that are using, we have people coming in from all over the place, but it's about 40% of the, our utilization chart are citizens of Brainerd. And then coming in, um, right after that, at about 14% is the city of Baxter. So when you're seeing, um, utilization as far as memberships, enrollment in our classes and workshops, and attendance at events, um, city of Brainerd, our citizens of Brainerd really, um, enjoy us as a place to be.
I've personally been at the compost heap twice in the last week.
Happy to be there for you.
Dropping off hopefully.
Yeah. Mostly. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to item seven, Council Committee Records, Report 7A, as the Safety and Public Works Committee. Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had five items on the original agenda. We added a sixth item, that is the Resolution 2021 Capital Bus Purchase. Um, so item number one is a change order, two, to improvements, 20-05, 20-06, Madison Street and Southeast Brainerd Construction Project. Uh, we had a, a few different things come up. Uh, the total was $11,521.28 added to the order. Uh, most of this was, um, one, one was a water main being hit on accident because it was not mapped. Another was, uh, some exploratory digging. We had two maps to, uh, locate pipes from, from the 1930s and 40s, and exploratory digging was the way that we delineated which map was correct. Um, there's a few other smaller items on there, too, but the motion was to recommend approval of the attached change order to DeChantelle Excavating, the amount of $11,521.28. ISO move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please continue.
Second item was, uh, event application for the hometown holidays. This is an event that's going on, um, let's see, dates? Starts 11/27. 11/27 through 12/3. Um... Let's end the Christmas tree. And, yeah, it ends with a lighting of the Christmas tree. The main event is going to be basically fires on the four corners of Laurel and Seventh. Um, but the motion coming out, there's some other things. Oh, don't forget. Fire pit. Yeah, not real, not building fires. Hopefully not building fires. We'll see. This is a first.
Voting no on this.
The chief is here. We will have live reindeer. There, there will be live reindeer, but yes, they'll be in a cage so that they can't fly. And not by the fires, hopefully. The motion coming out of, of, uh, committee was to recommend approval of the event under the following conditions. The applicant, one, the applicant submit required insurance certificate prior to the event taking place, and two, fire extinguishers be made available at each fire pit. The fires be in proper firing pit enclosures, and that the fires be extinguished fully after each day that they are lit. ISO move. Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Chief, you bring the s'mores?
I'm bringing a truck.
That's cool.
Ladder truck.
All right, please continue.
All right, uh, item number three was a final pay estimate, Brainerd Amateur Hockey Foundation Parking Lot Construction. Let's go with the motion coming out of committee, uh, was to approve the attached final pay application and payment to Anderson Brothers Construction of Brainerd LLC in a total contract amount of $121,615.54. That would be a $7,424.56 payment, aside from what has already been paid. ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Erickson. Any discussion? Any discussion? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
All right. Uh, fourth item was a final pay estimate, improvement 1919 Northwest Third Street and Jackson Street Reconstruction Project. Uh, motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the attached final pay application for improvement 1919 Northwest Third and Jackson Street Reconstruction Project to Anderson Brothers Construction of Brainerd LLC in the total final amount of $148,844.16. That would be $8,237.93 on this payment. ISO move. Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion?
And, Mike? Uh, basically, most of this additional cost, uh, was an upcharge in asphalt for almost four grand, another $1,200 for manhole cover casting, uh, as well as some, some other increased expenses not listed here, but, um, within 5% of original construction cost.
Thank you. Todd, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Yes, Gabe?
Yeah, I just have a question, Mr. President, and I don't know if we have the answer, but do we know how much the engineer's estimate was when, if we would have done this in 2019 or when we wanted to, or 2020? No? We don't know how much the, the extra delay in a year that the Hockey Foundation caused us, cost us? Because we know their parking lot cost 122,000. We know the $50,000 they extorted from us got to them, but we don't know what the cost increases of the delayed year of the project are?
If I may, Mr. President, I, I can go back and look and get that information. Do you?
I think I know that, too, actually.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
All right. Uh, fifth item was a final pay estimate for improvement 21-02 and 21-06, 2021 Crack Sealing Project. Uh, motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval for the final pay application to Lot Pros, Inc., in the total amount of $14,293.45. And ISO move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? To the chair?
Yep, this is an extra $5,000, uh, in linear feet compared to, um, the $54,775 linear feet that was estimated, uh, but within, I think it was 3, 3.55% of what we had estimated, and after hearing, uh, Engineer, Public Works Director Sandy explain that this has to be done by estimating how much crack we have to seal, sounds like a, a long process. 3.55% is off is pretty good, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Uh, item six is a resolution, 2021 Capital Bus Purchase. Uh, motion coming out of committee was to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the purchase of the 2021 budgeted bus from the North Central Bus Sales of St. Cloud at a total cost of $94,967. And ISO move. Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, and a second by Pritchett. Any discussion? This is the thing that is extra, that was sitting in front of you. Yep. Go ahead, Chairman O'Day.
Yeah, and this was, this was something that's budgeted for, um, it is a cost share. The state has 80%, covers 80%. Uh, of the remaining 20%, we cover 46% of the 20%. So I leave that up to Mr. Johnson to figure out the exact...
Too much. He's got it.
Too much.
That's, that's not a figure out.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none? Administrator Bergman, this is a resolution. Please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Anything else, Chairman O'Day?
End of report.
All right, Chairman Johnson, personnel and finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one action item and a quick update. The action item is to, uh, the Audit Engagement Letter with CLA, and the motion is to approve and authorize signatures of the engagement letter. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion?[1732.01]
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just an update. We did mail a letter to the Lakes Media Collaborative on August 25th asking for a refund. We have not yet heard from them. I'll update the next meeting.
Thank you. Anything else?
End of report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on tonight. And I'm sort of surprised they didn't just mail you a check. Roughly three quarters of a million dollars.
I'm wondering if they opened a letter.
Yeah. Item eight is unfinished business. Item 8A is the adoption of ordinance 1520 in Northern amending the city charter. We'll turn this over to Jennifer Bergman to explain why we're voting on it twice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, this is the ordinance that did have the first reading, the second reading, and a public hearing. It was voted unanimously. After the first reading, all seven council members were present. The second reading, however, there were only five members present for that vote, according to Attorney Langle. With a charter amendment, there must be an affirmative vote of all seven city council members, not just the majority or the unanimous of those in attendance. So this is on our agenda once again, was postponed from last meeting because now we do have all seven council members in attendance.
Perfect. Any questions on what this is and why we're voting on it a second time? Okay, so this is to adopt the proposed ordinance. So, Mr. Langle, we need to vote on the second reading again or not, or just the adoption of the ordinance by voice vote?
It's just the adoption of the ordinance is what the statute requires.
Okay.
Unanimous vote. Yep, thanks.
So we're not, okay, but is this not a resolution? When you adopt an ordinance?
It's an ordinance.
And don't we, don't we have a first reading, second reading, and then the adoption by resolution?
Correct. I believe you already had the first and second reading.
So we need to adopt the resolution by, by roll call?
Roll call vote.
Okay, first off, is there a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 1420, an ordinance amending the city charter?
So move 1520.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yep.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, and that resolution is adopted properly. So thank you for letting us take care of a little housekeeping, but we had to make sure that one was done correctly. Item 8B, which is unfinished business, this is the final reading from proposed ordinance 1521, amending section 515-63 to allow warming shelters as an interim use. And I believe Mr. Chansky is online to lead us, to give us anything we need to know about this. It's not in our packet. Mr. Chansky?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this proposed ordinance, it comes from a request made by Bridges of Hope to amend the city code, the zoning code, to allow for operation of a warming shelter, which is something our current code does not speak to. This request first came to the Planning Commission on Wednesday, October 20th, where they voted unanimously to pursue this amendment. They then held a special meeting on October 26th to review and approve recommended draft ordinance language to you, which you are be voting on tonight. You held, the council held its first reading of this proposed ordinance during your November 1st meeting. A little bit quick about this ordinance. Just want to clarify some things. So this is kind of acting as a little bit as an interim ordinance. As you may remember, the council did with the adoption of ordinance number 1519, place a temporary moratorium on amendments to the zoning code. What that did again, said that the city does not have to consider any amendments to the zoning code while we are updating the zoning code. However, it's still, the council has the authority to amend this ordinance if it chooses. Due to the time-sensitive nature of this request, the Planning Commission felt that it was necessary to amend the current zoning code now to allow for the operation of the warming shelter, and then take a more global approach to the issue in the new zoning code. So this ordinance, amend section 515-63, which is a B4 section of the ordinance, the current location that they are looking to open a warming shelter is in a B4 ordinance, and that's why we're looking at the B4 section. What it does, it amends B4 to allow warming shelters as an interim use. The purpose of the interim use, while we're taking that approach, is one, conditions can be placed on a, on the use. So if there's things like parking or other things that can be considered on a case-by-case basis, those things can be considered. It can, time limits may be imposed, so you can actually say this permit expires on this date. And it does, and because of that, it does not follow the land. So if Bridges of Hope or anyone who wishes to open a warming shelter chooses to end that use, it is gone. It doesn't stick with the land in perpetuity. You'll see as in the proposed ordinances, there is six listed criteria for a warming shelter, and additionally, because this is an interim use permit, other conditions may be applied on a case-by-case basis. One thing I do want to clarify with this is, one, I noticed in the, just noticed in my agenda request, the council is holding a public hearing tonight. You'll see that the public notice was attached to the agenda. So after you choose to hold the final reading, Mr. President, we want to open a public hearing to consider and hear public input on this proposed ordinance. What I do want to clarify, however, is that the, this public hearing is for the ordinance to amend section 515-63. It is not a public hearing for the warming shelter that Bridges of Hope is seeking to open. If the ordinance tonight is passed, then the Planning Commission has received an interim use permit from Bridges of Hope that will be considered on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 17th at 6:00 PM, and at that meeting, there'll be a public hearing to consider the warming shelter itself. So again, this public hearing is specifically for the ordinance to allow warming shelters in a B4. And with that, Mr. President, that's all I have to say unless the council has any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Chansky? Any questions, so y'all know what we're talking about? Mr. Chansky, my agenda does not list the public hearing. I want to make sure that the notification did go out that tonight is a public hearing on the ordinance.
It did, and it is, it is attached in the, in the packet as well.
Right, it's, it's just not on the agenda, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Would that be, would procedurally, would that be before the final reading or after the final reading but before the adoption?
I'll leave that to Attorney Langle, which one you should.
Should we do that right now, Attorney Langle?
Yeah, I think doing the hearing first makes more sense.
I do, too. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Chansky? Hearing none. We are on, going to open a public hearing on proposed ordinance 1521. This is an ordinance amending section 515 points dash 63, which is a B4 general business district of the zoning code, allowing warming shelters. As an interim use, Mr. Chansky? Okay, as an interim use. So it's 8:03, and we'll open the public hearing, and if you wish to speak on this ordinance allowing warming houses, please come forward, state your name, your address, and give us the three-minute version. I'll ask a second time. I'm going to ask three times, just, just in case you want to be last. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this ordinance amendment? And I'll ask a third time if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this ordinance. Before I close the public hearing, I wish to note to the public that we did receive a fax from a James M. Carlson of Colin Fritz. I don't know if James is speaking for himself or Colin Fritz, but he has six items that he has noted on this proposed ordinance amendment. Do I need to notify Mr. Langle? Do I need to read each of the six items into the record? Or is it possible just to note that we've received this? All right, then, per advice of the attorney, we will accept James Carlson's from Colin Fritz's facts regarding this matter. It's not really necessarily for or against. It's a number of just items of interest. So that will become part of the agenda and, or part of the record, and if you're interested, you can, this is public record now. So, thank you. We will now close the public hearing at 8:06, and tonight we're looking to conduct the second reading and public hearing, which we've done, ah, it does say public hearing, in little tiny letters. So we're looking for a motion to hold the second reading, oh, I see, down in the action, it's gone. It disappears. And to hold the final reading of proposed ordinance 1521 and dispense with the actual reading. And of course, this must pass unanimously, otherwise we're reading the ordinance. Okay, is there a motion to hold the final reading and dispense with the actual reading?
So move.
Erickson?
Second.
Second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that did pass unanimously. Next up, we're looking for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 1521, an ordinance amending section 515-63 in the B4 general business district.
So moved.
Motion by Pritchett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I, Mr. President, I kind of want to hear if there's answers to these six questions that Mr. Fritz asked, or Mr. Carlson asked.
I think that's legitimate. Can we go through the process, or do you want to do that right now? We actually have a motion and a second, so we're going to vote on that.
Okay, well.
It may impact you.
It may impact. I, I think he asked some good questions. I think he should get some answers. Can we get some answers next time at least?
We might be able to get answers now, but I'd really.
We have the motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor, and procedurally, we're going to vote.
Okay.
So if it impacts your vote, I apologize. We probably should have asked that before we motioned during the discussion period.
Yeah.
Okay, and I, I'm sorry. The motion has been made and seconded to adopt proposed ordinance number 1521. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yep.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Staff, Mr. Johnson brought up a good question. If you can, do your best within the next two weeks to just let us know what the answers to these are. And the last agenda item on this is to set, presuming we get an application.
Which we do have, Mr. President.
Oh, we got it already. No surprise there. We'd like to look for a motion to set a special council meeting to consider the application on November 22nd. What day of the week is that?
It is a Monday.
It is a Monday. It is next Monday, yes?
Yes.
Okay, when does planning and zoning meet?
It meets this Wednesday, November 17th.
In two days. So this would be a few days after that, on the following Monday, in council chambers at 6:00 PM prior to the budget workshop, so that we can kill the birds with one stone. Is there a motion to set that special council meeting for November 22nd at 6:00 PM prior to the budget workshop?
So move.
Motion by Erickson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek. Any discussion on the special meeting? Any discussion on the special meeting? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. All right, takes care of that fourteen agenda item. Next up, call for applicants. Mr. Mayor, you're up first.
Yes, so we have the following applications available for commissions and committees for the city of Brainerd. The Cable TV Advisory Committee is looking for one term expiring 2021, one term expiring 2022. Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022. Housing Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2022. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. Transportation Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022. We also have two terms, or two spots available on the EDA, one term expiring 2027 and one term expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and on the committees, I appoint Police and Fire Civil Service Commission. I think we're voting on that soon to disband that, as well as, but we have one term open on it if you want to have a, you know, get a quick tower award. Gabe will print one up for you on the printer.
I'm in.
I can get to your tower award right now.
That's two shots in the last two weeks.
I know. I've been mean to you. I just want to make sure you're still awake. And Water Tower Committee has two positions available. Next up is item nine. This is new business. Item 9A is a first reading of proposed ordinance 1522 repealing section 305.13 of the Brainerd City Code, which discontinues the Joint Police and Fire Civil Service Commission. See, that was your chance. Chris Schubert, are you going to give us anything on this, or is it, we've kind of went through this?
I think the agenda request is pretty self-explanatory as far as the Civil Service Commission. At this point, they're just talking about disbanding that.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Chris? If not, we're looking for a motion to hold the first reading of proposed ordinance 1522 to discontinue the Joint Police and Fire Civil Service Commission.
So move.
Again.
And, hang on, and to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance.
So move again.
Right on. We have a motion by Stunek, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Reminder, a unanimous vote is required to dispense with the actual reading. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yep.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yep.
And Bevins.
Yes, that ordinance is read for the first time unanimously. All right, next up is the, uh, this is the one we're adding. Yes, I don't have this.
Ordinance 1523.
Right, this is an ordinance, first reading of proposed ordinance 1523. Attorney Langle, you care to, this is something we added on Friday. Anything you wish, from the Charter Commission, anything you wish to discuss with what's in our packet?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
You may.
Um, just to set this up a little bit, maybe before Attorney Langle takes it from here, the Charter Commission did meet on November 10th to consider revisions to Chapter Six of the Public Utilities Commission. The Charter Commission did vote unanimously to approve the proposed changes and did direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending the charter. And that ordinance, 1523, was emailed out to you on Friday. It is included also in the online packet. Because of the Veterans Day holiday, we sent the packet out early, and the Charter Commission met that night, so this came out on Friday. And so with that, I think Attorney Langle is going to go through all of the proposed changes in Chapter Six. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Attorney Langle?
Mr. President, counsel, thank you. So I was going to walk through the changes, the substantive changes to Chapter Six concerning the BPU. The very first section here really just flushes out and clarifies the current utilities that the BPU operates, the water system, and what that includes, wastewater system, and the fact that the wastewater system is really jointly controlled by BPU and the Public Works Department, depending upon which part of the system you're talking about, and then the electrical system. Then we also put in a subparagraph D there that says that all other public utilities that are hereafter owned by the city would also fall under the BPU's control. So that's number one. Number three was originally this language about the secretary of the commission contained a lot of verbiage about financial, the financial role of the secretary. The position of secretary is actually statutory. That's where that comes from for public utility commissions. And years ago, I suppose the secretary would have undertaken some of these roles, but given the size of BPU, that these job functions really handled by your finance director, which is Todd Wicklund, and it's been that way for some times. What we did was, we really shortened up this section and then moved the finance director's role to a new paragraph eight. So the very last paragraph there talks about keeping the accounting records and the investment funds and so forth. Nothing in that paragraph eight is, is new, is really just a description of what he already does for, for BPU. So, but it was split out to clarify that it's not a secretarial role, it's the finance director's role. So that's paragraphs three and eight. Paragraph four is probably the most substantive change in the chapter here. Previously, it had that the commission had the power to appoint and employ all help to perform the functions for the BPU. This was changed that the city council employs all necessary help for the commission to properly perform its duties. And the reason for this change was really to bring all employees of the city under the control of the city council. The existing language created kind of an odd system where we had one department, the BPU, making employment decisions, but if there were ever any issues, any liability issues, for example, then the, if there's ever a case, claim against the city, it would come against the city, it wouldn't come against BPU. So you've got kind of a liability disconnect there. They can make decisions or fail to make decisions, and then, but the city becomes liable. And logically, it makes sense to have the same entity, the council, ultimately responsible for those employees, so that you've got one entity that's controlling the actions of its employees, just like the council does for every other employee in the city. The council already approves the collective bargaining agreements. The council already approves the personnel policy. The council already approves the personnel policy that applies to all BPU employees. But this just takes it that next step and brings all of them under the control of the city council. And just another example of something where there's a disconnect. The Equal Pay Act applies to the city of Brainerd, but the BPU made some salary decisions in the recent past that because of the effect of the Equal Pay Act resulted in mandatory changes at City Hall with respect to some salaries. So you had one department making decisions that had a ripple effect over on other departments in the city, and the city council had no control over it. It doesn't make sense to have that sort of dichotomy going on. There's really ought to be one entity controlling all that, so that sort of issue does not arise. So you've got a liability issue, you've got Equal Pay Act issues there. So those are the things that were driving really this change with respect to ultimate control of the employees over at BPU. It is still anticipated and expected that the commission will make recommendations for vacant positions and still play, you know, have a role in that process, but the ultimate decision for hiring will be by the city council, just like any other city employee. That's section four. Five was just a quick clarification. Paragraph six, paragraph six is really fleshing out service territories and who has decision-making control over the service territories for the different types of utilities. For example, wastewater, so that's your sanitary sewer, and water. The way it's set up here now is that the service territory is where the current mains and laterals are. So anytime there's a new development where you're expanding your main lines, your laterals, the city council is already approving these development agreements. So you're approving the expansion of the system. And it's, so in that respect, the council has that control. But service lines, so anytime a building is hooked up to those main lines, that's just a routine, ordinary, day-to-day action by the BPU. And that was left in their hands because that's just part of their ordinary business. So that's how that control was divided up. With respect to electrical utility, the service territory is not in the control of the council or the BPU. That's controlled by the state of Minnesota. So the state defines where that territory is, but there can be situations where another utility asks BPU to expand its electrical service outside of the state territory, just because geographically it just makes more sense for that to happen. In those situations where we would be going outside the state territory, the city council would approve it. The flip of that is if there are situations inside the territory where the BPU wants another utility to come in and provide electrical service in some area because it just makes more sense financially to do that, because it's already within the territory, that kind of contract would be within BPU's sole discretion. Because they're controlling their own territory anyway. So that's paragraph six, sort of that division of duties there with respect to service territories. Finally, paragraph seven, the change really was, the substantive change had to do with adding the requirement that every December, in addition to an operating budget being provided to the city council, they're also going to be providing a five-year capital improvement plan. And the idea behind this was simply to give the council an idea of what BPU sees coming down the line in terms of capital improvement projects. That quickly is a summary of the proposed Chapter Six.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Any questions of Mr. Langle on what we're going to be voting on? Just, does the first reading need to be unanimous, or just the adoption of the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. And no more questions of Attorney Langle? Minister Bergman, anything else?
I have nothing else to add.
Thank you very much. We're looking for a motion to hold, and we'll do a public hearing at the second reading. Okay, so there will be a public hearing on this at the second reading. We're looking for a motion to hold the first reading.
I move to hold and dispense with the first reading of proposed ordinance number 1522.
Thank you. Motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Again, this requires an unanimous vote, or we're going to read the whole thing. Yes, yes.
Correct.
Yep, it's in your packet incorrectly. It's 1523 is the ordinance. Thank you for that.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, you did good. Any further discussion? Spelling corrections? Nothing?
Okay.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. All right, next up is public forum. This is a time allocated for citizens to bring forth matters not on the agenda to the council's attention. We're looking to try and keep it around three minutes. Please, when you come forward, or if you come forward, be prepared to state your name and your home address. It is 8:22 and we're up. Tyler, hi.
Tyler Glenn, Executive Director of Bladeck. I will give you less than three minutes, but.
And an address.
Well, it is 24180 Aspen Drive, Nisswam, Minnesota.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to, I don't know what comes forward from the EDA. I just wanted to bring forward the, to the attention of the council, the, that we have opened our childcare assistance grants and just making everyone sure, we're trying to use as many platforms as we possibly can to get this word out. The county is using their ARPA, so the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, to help fund and assist new startups and existing childcare facilities to help us grow and expand our footprint in the childcare world. Numbers I have given in the past, but I, it's relevant here to give this. This county alone, we're about 1,200 slots short with regards to available daycare. So this is very important for our county, as it is for many other counties in the state of Minnesota, to help address this. The county is allocating $500,000 towards this grant. The application period opened on November 1st. We will close the application on December 6th, Monday, December 6th. Eligible expenses, childcare businesses, startups or expansion, training, facility modifications or improvements required for licensure, and equipment, but not limited to playground equipment, safety equipment, and so on. So I just wanted to come this evening and make sure that this council knew that this exists and there is funds available. I know that the county commissioner chair, Mr. Barrows, is here this evening. Thank him for, and the other county commissioners for addressing this, identifying this as a huge issue in our county and our state. So Bladeck is administering these grants. Currently, we have eight grants that have been submitted through the first two weeks. So we're looking obviously for more. We've made a couple of modifications, I would call it, to the applications, knowing that the state doesn't require federal or state IDs for home-based daycares. They use their social security number. So that was a quick change we had to make, was confusing some folks. But with the help of Sourcewell, Michelle Towgus is communicating with our home-based daycare providers. We're communicating with our home-based and our center-based, so we hope that this makes some impact. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And like I said, we've, the county is using some media platforms. We're trying to get this out to as many people as possible. Hopefully, we can have some impact.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. You owe my kid some candy too, by the way.
I'm on it. Anybody else wish to come forward during the public forum session tonight? Please, come on up, state your name and address.
All right, hi, Jana Shogren.
It's important to you.
Yeah, 7247 Lono Crowe, Jana Shogren. Sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Warming Shelter. I know the ordinance was in, on the agenda tonight, but the Warming Shelter itself. I just feel the need to keep the council up to date on our progress and what we have been up to. Last time I was in front of this group, you know, I told you we would be coming forward with a permit for 1919 South Sixth Street. That is the front-facing location of the building. The entrance, the rear entrance that our space will use is actually 1926 South Seventh Street. I wanted to just clarify that. So we, when I stood before you last time, we were about to embark on a very exciting fundraiser and a community awareness event. We had the sleep out so others can sleep in with the goal of raising awareness and to raise $70,000 in one week. We were extremely nervous about that goal. We felt like that was a very bold goal, to raise $70,000 in seven days. And I just have to thank this community. Not only did we raise $70,000, we raised $140,000 in seven days. That was matched by local funders, so we really, we raised $210,000 that week for our Warming Shelter. The reason I bring this up is I believe this really demonstrates the commitment that this community is showing, and they're coming behind us and alongside us to make this a reality. Nobody should have to sleep outside. And I think our community is stepping up and showing they agree with us on that. I will tell you too, these weren't big gifts. There were some big gifts. I want to acknowledge there were a few big gifts. However, there were over 300 individuals and entities who made up that $140,000. So these were a lot of 50 and $100 gifts, people showing that they were behind us on this project. So we really thank the community for that. We had more than 25 sleepers throughout the seven nights. Mayor Bado was one of them. I was one of them, a few in our group were also sleeping out, took a night to experience that, put ourselves in someone else's shoes to feel what it would feel like to sleep out. Some of the reflections that I heard were that people were concerned about the cold, but overwhelmingly, the cold wasn't the worst part because we were prepared for it. We had gear that was made for sleeping in the cold. Many people who sleep out without a choice do not have that kind of gear. What I did hear was that the noise was unsettling. It was a very, it was very noisy to sleep near a busy highway. I also heard from some folks that it struck them that they, they had the luxury of feeling safe because we were allowed to be there, we had permission to be there. Maybe we had a loved one or someone we knew sleeping near us. We didn't have to fear that anybody would come along to rob us or tell us to move along, or whatever the case may be. So those were some of the things. One that was particularly poignant to me is somebody said, I can't imagine after having that horrible of a night's sleep, how you would get up and go to work the next day, or how you would care for children without getting any sleep and with fearing for your safety potentially. So we also held a walkthrough at the location, the potential location, with council members being invited, county commissioners invited, and our committee members were there. And we did have a number of folks stop by, including council member O'Day. So thank you for stopping by and visiting our location and trying to understand more about what we were doing there. Overwhelmingly, the response has been positive to this project. We have had some folks with concerns, I will say that. And I have really appreciated the folks who have just stopped me in public, or stopped one of our committee members, or called our offices, or emailed with concerns. And I can tell you with 100% certainty that everyone we've had the chance to talk voice-to-voice or face-to-face to and describe what we are doing and what it is and what it isn't, all of their concerns have been resolved. So I just put that out there to anybody who might be listening from home. Please do reach out if you have concerns or worries about this project. We want to partner with you. We want to be in this with our community. So we invite you to call our office at Bridges of Hope, 825-7682. You can ask to talk to me, Jana Shogren, or Anne Honeycutt, our shelter director. With that, I leave you with that update, and I thank you for working with us on this project.
Thanks, Jana. Here, this is for you.
Okay, thanks.
All right. We're in the public forum section of the city council, where we take testimony from people on items that have not been on the agenda. Anybody else wish to let their thoughts be known to the council? Anybody online, Sean? Anybody else in the audience? If you're online and you do want to speak, you hit star three, and that'll effectively digitally raise your hand. And then when we call on you, it's star six and we'll unmute you. So last call, online or in the building for public forum. It is 8:30 and we will close the public forum. We're going to go on to staff reports. We'll start over on my right with Chief Bestel. Thank you very much. Sean Strong, our IT GIS director, anything? Nope. Welcome back, Eric. Anything from the HRA?
Nothing tonight, sir.
All right, Connie Hillman, Finance Director. Paul Sandy, Public Works Director, interim.
Yeah, I just got a couple of things. Why are you shaking your hat? So right now, our staff here in the engineering department, we're compiling all of our data from our 2021 street survey for our pavement management. With that data, we'll be bringing that forward here, probably late December, early January, for an update of our five-year capital plan, which is adding the year 2026 on our plan and giving you guys kind of more or less a report card on how we're doing on our streets. Also in December, currently, we're trying to get an address list put together for our 2022 construction projects, which happened to be up in North Brainerd, about 17 blocks of reconstruction up in that area. So we will be trying to get out in front of the public on some proposed designs and things for North Brainerd. And we had our first snow event that was plowable on Sunday. Our guys, I think Chief Stunek probably shoveled the whole cul-de-sac before we got there, like he always tries to do.
Use snowboard, chief?
Yep. We did get the whole city plowed in one day on Sunday. The guys appreciate getting it a little early so that they can get practiced up because you tend to lose some of your plowing skills over a long summer. So yeah, everything went well for first time out, so we're hoping for not much snow.
Okay, Mr. Sandy, one complaint that I've already made to you, but I want to make it part of the public record. Every single council meeting, I try and remind us to petition MINDOT to put arrows up on the Fourth and Washington by Walgreens intersection so the people know which lane is going which way. The only way you know for sure is on the tar where we've painted, which is now covered for the next eighteen months of winter. It should be cleared off tomorrow. I can't believe MINDOT put brand-new overhead arms up on those and never once would consider our 100,000th request to please put signs up on those arms as to which lane goes what. I'm terrified to be in the right or center lane with Grandma in the left lane going to take a right turn or go straight, and that's heading south on Fourth. So where the two left lanes.
That was Councilman O'Day.
Yeah, maybe we'll put this on SP&amp;W so he can be told by MINDOT, no, one more time. Thanks, Paul.
I'll bring it up to the traffic engineer.
Well, I got your back. I'll get my blower out tonight yet to get on.
Thank you.
It's got headlights.
Poll the arrows off.
We got to get you a habit, chief. Maybe you ought to join the city council or something. That would be number three. HR Director Schubert? Attorney Langle? All right, and Jennifer Bergman, our city administrator.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. All right, so well, first of all, Mayor Bado, and I have four items. First of all, Mayor Bado and I attended or were invited to attend the Brainerd Lakes Chamber Government Affairs Committee meeting on November 8th. The committee wanted an update both from the city of Brainerd and the city of Baxter regarding projects that potentially could impact businesses. The mayor and I discussed park improvements, streetlight policy, the parking commission recommendation, among other things. And the Government Affairs Committee asked us to share anything in any ways that they could help the city. Secondly, I did leave in front of you some literature from OSHA. As you may have heard, on November 1st, OSHA, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, released an emergency temporary standard obligating employers with 100 or more employees to require COVID vaccinations or weekly testing and masking mandates for unvaccinated employees. The city of Brainerd does have more than 100 employees. The ETS covers private sector employers with 100 or more, as well as state and local governments and states with OSHA-approved state plans, which Minnesota does have. Right now, what they are requiring is that we have a policy in place and that people begin wearing masks by December 6th and provide a negative COVID test on a weekly basis beginning January 4th. However, Minnesota OSHA had 30 days to come up with their rules. They can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive than OSHA. And there are also several court cases and litigation that is pending right now as well. The court challenges may have delay implementation of this. It may affect or eliminate provisions. So at this point, staff is just waiting to hear the result of that litigation. I have been in contact with Attorney Langle, and I know that their firm is also working on this. At this point, staff is not recommending anything, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that we are staying on top of that, those regulations. heads up that we are staying on top of that, those regulations. Two more things also, it's, we're going to start talking about redistricting. Finance Director Hillman and I met with Debbie Erickson from Crow Wing County to begin that discussion. The legislature has until February 15th to complete the statewide redistricting, and then municipalities have until March 29th or 60 days, whichever is first, to complete their redistricting. However, it is unlikely that the legislature is going to complete their process by February 15th, so we do anticipate that there will be a new timeline. IT Director Strong has started working on some of the maps, so just wanted to let you know that we're also staying in touch with that process as well. Last but not least, Evergreen Cemetery, as you know, had requested $20,000 from the city of Brainerd. We have found out that because we are a charter city, we cannot make appropriations. We have even found out more since then. And actually, Joe, if maybe I can have you explain this, because I think you'll do a much better job of why we cannot fund the Evergreen Cemetery. I know, I didn't say I was going to be short.
No, we said it was going to be short, and you're blowing it on the horn.
She's got a contest going with Mayor Bado as to how long they can talk. We're going to put you in.
He can't talk tonight.
Go ahead, Mr. Langle. Give us the shortened version of why we can't support the cemetery financially.
Sure. Mr. President and council, just very briefly, so there's a statute from the 1950s that allows statutory cities and fourth-class charter cities to support these types of cemeteries. Brainerd is a third-class charter city. It is not within that group, so therefore, you do not have statutory authority to make that kind of donation.
Any questions on that? We just...
Tell me twice.
Yep, no.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I apologize, I missed Community Development Director Chansky. Mr. Chansky, what in the heck have you been doing the last couple of weeks?
Trying to sleep.
Well, Mr. President, I see I'm currently at home. I am on paternity leave as my second daughter, Kennedy Marie, was born last Monday at 10:20 a.m. So I am at home currently, last week, and this week, and starting next week, I will be working part-time until December 6th, and on December 6th, I will be back full-time in the office. Other than that, Mr. President, I have no other comments.
Thank you very much. My apologies for skipping over you. And on to the moment we've all waited for, Mayor Bado with a 45-minute report.
That's right, 44 minutes. First of all, I just want to say it's good to hear that we are a bronze city. I'm glad that we're not above that third tier. Sounds fantastic. I have three items for tonight, the first of which is the sleep-out event. Just wanted to give a quick update to people about what it's like to sleep outside for a night, and what a great event that was, and I'm glad that I was able to participate. Absolutely correct, sleeping next to a busy highway, extremely difficult, even with earplugs, extremely difficult. But more so for myself, what I found very interesting was that because of work shortages, most of our businesses close early now, and so at 11 o'clock at night, it became very apparent that I was outside for the night. Prior to that, when Cub Foods was open, when the gas stations were open, there was a feeling where, oh, I'll just walk down to the gas station, get a quick beef jerky, which I did, right at 11 o'clock. But once those lights went off, it became very apparent, okay, oh, now you're in it for the long haul. And that was an interesting sobering moment for myself. Very glad that individuals in the city stepped up to do that, make sure that people are aware that most people that are homeless in our community are sleeping on someone's couch. And the issue with that is, let's say you have an argument with the individual that you're sleeping in their house, and they say, you know what, you got to go. If you leave and it's 11 o'clock at night, where do you go? And if it's the middle of the winter, where do you go? So I'm glad to see that the city council is looking to that issue. That's one. Number two, the December 3rd, we're having the Snowflake Lane, which you did hear about earlier as a event application. Just so you're aware, I did inform Safety and Public Works, I felt it was my duty. I will now inform the rest of the council that myself, as well as other members of Community Action, will be manning some fire pits on December 3rd. Maybe you might want to have Chief Stunek there with a little bit of help, maybe Chief Bestel wants to join as well. I don't know. Me and fire, probably not a great idea. But I'm going to be there. I'm going to be there. So if you want to have some s'mores that are probably burnt, yeah, I'm the guy. I'm the guy. Lastly, I have a little bit of an update, but a request from people in the audience or people at home. Two years ago, we received a grant from Crow Wing Energize for some snow shovels. Forty-eight snow shovels were received, and this grant was for our walkable-bicable committee. As those of you here know, the walkable-bicable committee has disbanded. The...
Or the shovels.
We have the shovels, but the goal of these shovels was, because we continually put in new sidewalks and because we believe so strongly about the walkability of our community, there's a concern there, at least from myself and from members of that previous committee, that potentially there could be elderly in the community that have the inability to shovel their sidewalks. Legally, from the city, you are mandated to have them cleared within 48 hours. That puts these people in a bad position where maybe you live in the cities and your elderly parents live up here. What do we do with that? I have now taken upon myself to figure out how we're going to get this done this year. I have some volunteers lined up. We are working on generating a list. The list should focus on, within the city of Brainerd, and it should focus on elderly. And with a strong, strong focus on those who are unable to do it for themselves. So if you are a member of a group, potentially basketball, hockey, these associations we have out there with youth volunteers, we've reached out to the junior JCs who have signed on to help as well. The goal of this is we've got a list that we want to generate, we want to generate a list of volunteers, and then when we have a significant snowfall, maybe six times a year, we get these people out, we get these sidewalks cleared off, and then we're not running into those issues that we may otherwise have. So it is my goal to make sure that that happens. We've already had one snowfall. I apologize for not getting that done previously, but as you know, our committee disbanded, and so now we have to take care of a little bit of business. So if you're out there and you're interested, please contact us at City Hall, and we'll try to get some things figured out. End of report.
Thank you, Mayor Bado. Next up, council committee reports. Taz Erickson.
Nothing to report tonight.
Dave Pritchett?
Nothing to report.
Tiffany Stingline?
Nothing.
Chief Stunek?
Oh, yeah, I got you. How can I beat the mayor? I've got one thing. I attended the Veterans Day ceremony at the high school last Thursday. It was a great event, and it was really good. I even invited the mayor. I sat next to him to protect him, and he behaved.
Chairman O'Day?
Yeah, tomorrow we'll have another meeting for the Minnesota, Mississippi Trailhead Landing Trailhead Park.
What's in Minnesota?
I'll never remember the name of that park.
Well, it's Zebby. Nobody knows what you're talking about.
And we put him as chairman. Oh, my God.
So we're working along with that. The design is coming along great. Giving, being given $2.85 million and having to design a park that was designed to cost, what was it, $4.5 million? It's challenging, but WSB is doing a great job, coming in with estimates for buildings and things that are way less than what we thought it was going to be. So that's looking great. I'll speak to going to the meeting for the warming shelter. I don't want to get into the weeds of opinions, and that's not part of this meeting yet, but I will say, if anyone's concerned about this, you have a very well-organized group, and it's impressive. So what you guys have done so far, I commend you for that. So thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman Johnson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Three quick items. Kirby Trucket and Sir Plousalot hit my neighborhood. The names on the trucks look awesome, Paul. Good job. The Personnel and Finance Committee is excited to craft a policy around this OSHA thing. And Washington Street will not be so loud in five years, Mr. Mayor. We are going to fix that.
Thank you. Greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Johnson. I just have a couple of things. One is, after much cheerleading by Chairman Johnson and Minister Bergman, I went down to the co-op and had my first lunch off the sandwich board. The spicy ham and Swiss and the tomato bisque was fantastic. If you haven't been shopping locally, you're missing out on probably the best meal, lunch meal I've had in a long time. Not to be outdone by David Chansky, it's my daughter's birthday today, Kelly Jr. If you see the two of us together, she's the pretty one. And lastly, to comment on Beef Jerky Bado. If I'd have known that you were involved with lightening the downtown, with the Brainerd urban renewal policy of burning buildings to the ground, I might have voted against, I would either have called you Beef Jerky Bado or Snowflake, one of the two.
If you would have showed up to our meeting, you would have heard that prior, so...
I'm going to burn a marshmallow on the Snowflake Day.
Better come to my fire pit, because you'll burn them up.
Yeah. End of report. We are now, before we move into the, we adjourn to closed session, I want to remind you that in the agenda, we're reversing items 14 and 15. And what we do is we adjourn into the one closed session, we come back into open session, we adjourn into a second one, and during those adjournments, you guys can't stay. So we're looking for a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D05 subdivision 3C3 to develop or consider offers for the purchase of property at the Northern Pacific Center, 1511 Northern Pacific Road, Brainerd, Minnesota 56401.
Still moved.
Motion by Pritchett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned into closed session.